Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on today, June 6, 2017. I'd like to ask everyone to take a moment to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we call on Councilmember Bob Ward.
Let's bow our heads, please. As we gather to make decisions for our city, we ask that we be given the guidance to make decisions that promote the overall common good. We ask that we use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider each matter that is placed before us. We ask that we represent all the members of our cities fairly and always act in accordance with what is best for our city and its citizens. We would ask that our actions be guided by the high standards of ethics and the legal standards that govern our actions. We ask that our personal fates give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen.
Special proclamation this evening regarding Link Transit. At this time, council recognizes Mike Nunn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I mentioned last night, our work session today was our one-year anniversary for our Link Transit system. We had an excellent time this morning from 9:00 to 12:00 out in the hub, sort of a ride appreciation time. Heard lots of stories about getting to work, getting to school. Glad to be here. People have actually moved into Burlington and we have access to transportation. So it was a good time for staff to hear that. Had several giveaways. Monday, as you know, it was raining quite a bit. We exceeded on average daily ridership by about 200 people. Today, I was just told we have almost 700 people for the day. Your fare-free week is appreciation for our riders and also hopefully getting some folks to try out Link Transit and stay with us.
Does that make this one of the highest ridership days ever?
Fair free, yes. Last June was a taking by our class. Thanks to working, that's working out the boat and planning today, so a lot of people came today. Tonight, we want to have a resolution for Link Transit Day. Also recognize one of our riders and supporters from a year ago that was actually in our original video that we launched for that. It's bringing the glasses to do that. So if you want to come on up at this time.
Did we want to do the video first?
We can.
Yep.
It's a blessing that we have buses coming to Burlington because a lot of times I don't go out because I can't afford a cab.
It's hard to get to a job and it'll make it easier. The job level is probably going up.
The reason that we are so excited about it is because we don't have a grocery store.
I would get rid of my car. Just use the bus.
Again, that was one of our original videos. Just today, I believe, we have a new video coming out. Actually, it's like a day in the life of a driver. So it'd be interesting to pass that around, let you see that. Just glad if you'd like to come up.
Ms. Glass, did you want to share any words or about your last year with Link Transit?
I'd be glad to tell everybody about the Link Transit. My name is Brenda. I live at our prolific homes on every street. Instead of senior, but that's age only. We are so active that we call ourselves the Busy Bees. We have a director by the name of Ms. Revels who suggested to us that we catch the bus to Gibsonville. I had been to Gibsonville, she told us about the Reno's Pizza and the Six Scoops Ice Cream. So as improved, we call ourselves the Car Room Gang. Gang as in Gail's a nice girl. Girl's a nice guy, not gang, but anyway. But then we call ourselves the Car Room Gang. We all caught the bus that day and we had a beautiful time. We actually took the Link Transit. We transferred at the mall and then they put us into the little town of Gibsonville. We got off the bus, we went to Reno's Pizza. I don't eat pizza, but I ate pizza that day. It was good and hot. Everybody was so nice. We went next door to Six Scoops. I had two hot dogs. They were so good. We just walked around the shop. There was an antique shop across the track. Some of us were there. We also got a chair for our history. There was a train that was set on the track and a lot of us had never even been inside a train. We have a lady by the name of Bonnie Johnson who was 95 years old who went with us and it was just a joy to see her face to be on that train and to know that, you know, she has been a part of history also. So I truly thank Mr. -- there you go, babe. I truly thank Mr. Nunn. We have a social worker named Ms. Alicia Gales and she is just so nice and lovely and young. Anytime the group wants to do anything, I go to her. She'll call Mr. Nunn and he'll work something out for us some kind of way. So we seniors at Burlington are truly thankful for the Link Transit. We need that Link Transit. Without that, a lot of seniors wouldn't go out and do things that we get to do. And we would love to see it on the side so we can get the movie. We'd love to see it run on the side so we can go to a nearby church or somewhere. I do want to thank Link Transit and everybody else.
With my eyes. To have you here this evening to present this proclamation to you and to Mr. Nunn proclaiming June 6, 2017 as Link Transit Day. Where after years of careful study and planning, Link Transit began operation on June 6, 2016. And whereas Link Transit is a collaboration between the city of Burlington and the town of Gibsonville. And whereas Alamance Community College, Alamance County, United Way of Alamance County, and the Hayden Harmon Foundation are also financial partners supporting Link Transit. And whereas Link Transit serves major destinations such as downtown Burlington, Alamance Regional Medical Center, Alamance Community College, downtown Gibsonville, the Department of Social Services, as well as many multifamily neighborhoods, retail, and grocery establishments throughout the service area. And whereas Link Transit was connected over 80,000 riders with their destinations on five routes in its first year of service. And whereas TransDev, Inc. has rated Link Transit highest in safety and customer service out of 61 similar transit systems in the southeast region. And whereas Link Transit's anniversary will be celebrated by showing appreciation to riders that make it successful like Ms. Glass. Now therefore, I, Ian Boultonis, Mayor of the city of Burlington, on behalf of the Burlington City Council, do hereby proclaim June 6, 2016 as Link Transit Day in Burlington and encourage the community to ride, enjoy, and connect with Link Transit throughout the year. And just a reminder, fare-free continues all through this week until Friday. Mike, would you like to join me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could add one other comment before you're going back, I don't want to leave it out. Our customer service has exceeded our expectations today. An actual passenger took a cake to the drivers. So they're very appreciative of what they do for them. So we're always seeing things like that from our community and we're very thankful for that. Thank you.
I'd say something too. Ms. Glass?
Yes, sir.
She's just as energetic at Burlington Home than she is tonight. So if you've never been down to Burlington Homes on every street, go by there and see her. There's a good group of senior citizens down at that location.
I invite all of y'all to come sometime. Be glad to see you. Talk about some things. Get some stuff going for the seniors. My aunties feel like we, as seniors, are so often forgot about. I'm full of ideas. There's a lot of stuff I would love to see us do, but I need y'all's help. Please come see us.
Not like you had to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have shared comments?
We have a number of recognitions this evening. First off, the Burlington Fire Department. This time, we'd like to recognize Chief Jay Smith.
Mr. Mayor, as Chief Smith's coming forward, these gentlemen have been recognized this evening when unable to make our most recent fire awards and we thought it would be appropriate to give them a chance to be recognized. And so Chief's going to take the lead from here and color our recognitions.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, we appreciate you having us tonight. On April 2nd, we had the Burlington Fire Department Awards and Commendations Ceremony. So we do run calls and respond to emergencies at Burlington Fire. That's what our job is. We tried to rotate crews. Somebody had to be working that day, so we had members that were off-duty receiving awards. But the ones that were on-duty, we tried to coordinate them and work them into the program as they were available. Engine 3, A shift, engine 3, never made it. So they were running stuff all over the place. So the manager suggested that we come and recognize them here tonight at the council meeting. So also, I have Battalion Chief Anthony Davis. He's Battalion Chief for A shift Battalion 1. And also Brock Wright, which is the Chairman of our Awards Committee. And Jay Mevin, one of our senior members of the department, he's here tonight as well. So I'll turn it over to Captain Wright. He's going to announce the awards and we'll do the presentation for them right here and Chief Davis is going to help me with that.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Captain Wright, I'd like to read the description of the awards that these guys will be receiving this evening. Life-saving Level 1. This award is given to an employee for the saving of human life performed with little personal risk. The award may be given if the employee's actions led to prolonging life. The other award that you'll see is Exceptional Duty. This award is given to an employee for continuous performance of non-emergency duties with unusual thoroughness, conscientiousness, determination, and initiative that increases department efficiency, effectiveness, honor, and distinction. So those are the ones that will be received.
Tell them just a little bit about how that process works and what flows.
So we have -- I'm the Chairperson of the Awards Committee. We have a committee consisting of firefighters all the way up to Attac Ufrank. So what happens is, is we run calls. 9,000, right at 9,000, I think is what we ran last year. We had roughly 30 awards that were given out that anybody can recognize, nominate anybody. So more times than not, it's a company officer that puts in the nomination for his crew. So if it meets the standard here that we have, they send it up, it comes to me, and we meet on it. A couple of times a year, we vote as a group and decide what the department would like for that employee to have if it meets the requirement. So that's how we get them. And, you know, like Chief Smith said, we have an award ceremony each year, usually around the April, recognizing for the previous year. So with that being said, if we would, Captain Stevenson, he's going to be receiving a life-saving Level 1. Engineer Watkins. Engineer Watkins was promoted to engineer. He's recognized for that. Exceptional duty and life-saving Level 1. And firefighter Overman, life-saving Level 1.
Footgood, how about a round of applause?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We next have some recognitions for our Burlington Police Department. At this time, council recognizes Police Chief Jeff Smythe.
Councilman, President Agent Adam Schultz is here to present an award on behalf of the Department of Justice to the Burlington Police Department. So I'll turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here tonight to the Department of Justice and the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund is in a cooperating award called the Destination Zero Award. The purpose of the Destination Zero Award is to get law enforcement fatalities nationally down to zero. So obviously, that's a lofty goal. And a way to do that is to recognize departments which had implemented effective policies and procedures that benefit law enforcement officer wellness and safety. So there's four categories for this award. General officer safety, officer traffic safety, officer wellness, and comprehensive safety. So since 2013, your department and yourselves, through the investment that you participate with, the police department have instituted numerous policies and procedures that have had a positive effect on officer safety and wellness. And I'd just like to highlight a couple of those for you tonight, just to give you some perspective. The police department has instituted a minimum staffing level to ensure response safety. A mandatory ballistic vest policy was implemented and the vests were upgraded to Level 3A. Officers were issued hard armor plate carriers, helmets, ballistic shields, and ballistic door panels were installed on patrol cars. Mandatory seatbelt policy and the installation of push bumpers that reduce injuries during low-speed collisions were installed. Vehicle interiors were redesigned to increase visibility. MDCs, fans, and antennas were removed and radar mounts secured so that they do not injure officers in collisions. Magnetic microphone mounts, which enable the officer to release the microphone versus trying to clip the microphone to the radio into a clip. New patrol schedule, which featured permanent shifts, allowed for officers to have larger blocks of time off with family, but also allowed the police department overlapping coverage at peak times in the city. And the department has taken the advantage of these shifts to schedule new patrol schedule and also to include new training opportunities for officers with the goal of increasing their safety and professionalism. The police chaplain program and a peer support team were created and physical fitness and wellness programs were instituted. So based on these actions and these policies, the Department of Justice and the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund would like to present the department with an award for 2017 for the category of comprehensive safety.
At this time, we recognize our city clerk.
Councilor, it's my responsibility to not record any topical conflicts of interest in matter of reports. Some as far as potential conflicts in these matters.
Before council, our minutes from May 1, 2017, City Council Work Session, May 2, City Council Meeting, and May 16, City Council Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes as stated?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, minutes have been approved. We have two items for our consent add-on agenda. Item D, Public Art Memorial and Honorary Donations Policy, otherwise known as PAM. Item E, City Code Chapter 36, Section 36-170 Amendments. Do I hear a motion to add these items to our consent agenda? So move. Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, consent agenda items have been added. Before you, is there our agenda? Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as stated? So move. Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, agenda has been adopted. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. Anyone who has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Municipal Service District Services Contract effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021. Item B, to approve a contract amendment between the city of Burlington and TransDev Services, Inc., to operate the Paratransit Service for a period of two years with an option for two one-year periods effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019. Item C, Budget Amendment 2017-45, Animal Services Donation, the details of which are spelled out from your agenda. Item D, to approve the Public Art Memorial and Honorary Donation Policy. Item E, to approve amendments to the City Code Chapter 36, Section 36-170, Rental Parking Spaces Established in Designated Municipal Lots, Fees, Permit Violations. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, consent agenda has been approved. We have a number of public hearings, sorry, one public hearing this evening. Item 1, a public hearing has been set to consider the adoption of the 2017-2018 fiscal year budget and the community development budget. At this time, council recognizes City Manager Harden Watkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just so I can operate the device here a little easier and be able to see you, I'm going to do a presentation from here this evening. So what I want to do, this is, I think council has heard this and some folks have heard this at a previous work session, so tonight is a public hearing on the proposed FY 2017-2018 budget. So I want to run through some of the same material. Councilmembers should bear with me, some of this you've heard before, but there are a couple of new items that will be new information for you as well. So let me begin by talking about some of the challenges we faced with this year's budget. Balancing with effectively no property tax increase while trying to maintain the same levels of services for our citizens. The second item we started out was trying to fund the city's share of public transportation, Link Transit. We have a key instance on economic development this year and we also wanted to try to fund treat light conversion to LED. So one of the things unique about this year's budget, it's a revaluation period for Alamance County being on an eight-year cycle. And the city is, what we are proposing is a revenue-neutral tax rate of 59.73 cents. What does revenue-neutral mean? What it means is, it's a property tax rate that will generate the same amount of tax revenue generated in the year prior to revaluation, also while allowing for average growth over that same time period since the last revaluation. So what we're going to see, what we have seen in our accounting tax assessor, Jeremy Akins, has put this together, is that the city's actually values are going down by 1.62% compared to what they were in 2008. So for the city of Burlington, in order to generate the same amount of money that 58 cents generated last year at the old revale numbers from 2008 that carried forward through 2015-16, it will take 59.73 cents to generate that same number. So again, 59.73 cents to generate what 58 cents generated last year. So there's no change in the effective tax that citizens would pay, but there will be a differential rate since everybody's property values will go up and down, but city-wide, they're going to go down by 1.62% according to Mr. Akins.
Pardon me, just as a comment, the reevaluation is mandatory every eight years?
Every eight years for Alamance County, yes, sir. The revenue that we're projecting for FY 1718 from property tax will be $26,000,000,008,004 at that tax rate. So if you look at this graphic here, the areas that are in red are the areas of Alamance County, so the entire square is Alamance County. The areas that are in red are the areas of the tax districts that have seen a decline in revale and in values since 2008, with the central one here being the city of Burlington at 1.62. So you see us in the middle. So those of us who are in the center, here you see city of Burlington, here you see the town of Hall River, you see Green Level. Those are communities that have gone down. The others that you see on the perimeter are fire districts and county has fire district taxes in the rural areas. And so you see sort of central, the central portion here, kind of things that are along I-40 have all gone down in valuation over the last eight years with us being in the center of that. Areas that you see in yellow have increased, and for instance, I think this has been covered in the newspaper, but you do see increases in many of the municipalities with Mevin leading the way at 17%. So in Mevin, obviously, if they didn't change the tax rate, they kept the tax rate the same, they're going to generate more. We're in a very unique situation here in Burlington. Quite frankly, it's a paradigm change post, you know, economic downturn of 2008, 2009 that I think the only folks that have seen this happen before, what we're seeing this year are folks who lived through the depression of the 1940s. You know, as everybody knew, home values always either stayed the same or went up and you knew that was a safe bet. What we have seen, you know, as a follow-up to the Great Recession is home values are not necessarily increasing in many communities. So it's a paradigm shift for us and it's something I think everybody has always talked about with revale. You're going to see property values go up and are you going to roll back, roll back to the revenue-neutral rate? It's a paradigm shift that we're going to, quite frankly, roll the other direction to stay at the revenue-neutral rate. So here's a few more statistics on revaluation. Like I said, we had a negative growth in property values of largest impact in any city in Alamance County, so we're seeing that go down by 1.62%. The Alamance County overall growth percentage with the county, entire county DAX digest is about a 2.6% increase. So just for comparison purposes, the city's assessed valuation, as you can see here, is a little over $4 billion and where the county's assessed valuation is a little over $12 billion. So this is what this is showing, the city's tax base is only about a third of the county's tax base, so a penny on the city's tax rate only generates a third of what a penny on the county's tax rate generates, just as folks try to compare. So the other challenge we're seeing this year is there's uncertainty in state revenues and that's a similar story to councilmembers, what you've heard before. We're going to be okay, we think, for FY 1718, but, you know, as always, and you've probably heard me say this before, you heard other folks tell you this, that future's a little uncertain. There is another bill in the North Carolina Legislature that calls for reallocation of some of the sales tax that has passed the Senate and is headed to the House and still hasn't been finalized. So we're a little nervous about that looking to the future. There's also uncertainty from Congress regarding the federal budget. I think many of you are aware of this. President Trump's budget did not include any funds for the Community Development Block Grant or Home Program. We are assured by our folks in Congress and folks at the National Community Development Association who try to stay in touch with our legislative leaders at the federal level that those funds will be restored and that the messages they have sent out is, probably in terms of budgeting now, go ahead and budget the same thing you budgeted last year, you're probably going to be okay, but we may have to do an adjustment mid-year if it's a slight increase or decrease. But we're a little nervous about that, but we're going to go forward proposing the same thing we had last year. Funding for capital ally requests is another one of our challenges. We do have aging vehicles and we have lots of facilities that are decades old that always need attention and that's something we're always trying to stay at the forefront of our mind. And then finally, one of the things we needed to fund this year is three positions that are all direct service positions for the city. Two are in recreation, and when I say direct service, I'm not the folks that are going to directly interact with the public and directly interact with our citizens. So we're adding an Assistant Aquatics Director that will be focused at our, we actually operate four aquatics facilities. Manert Aquatics Center, which is open year-round, North Park Pool, which is open seasonally, the Splash Pad, which is a new facility that opens seasonally, and then we also run a small pool for Camp Green Leaves up at Lake Kamak that is seasonal, that has smaller hours just for sort of special events and camps. So we have four things that are within the purview of our aquatics group. One of those has been added in the last year and the Splash Pad opened about a year, a little over a year ago, and so we're trying to catch up on some of the work that's needed to be done there. We're also proposing adding a maintenance technician in recreation and parks that will be focused directly on aquatics maintenance. And when some of our seasonal pools close, that person would back up and help out with the events group and perhaps even some of our other facilities, but primarily be focused on aquatics and events. In the public works group, we're adding, this would be in the public works department, in our fleet division, we're proposing a mechanic just to help us with our aging vehicles and our growing fleet that we have, a position that has been requested numerous years, and this year we have decided to propose funding that. We also have provision for a merit salary adjustment for all of our city employees this year. So we have several different funds at the city, as you're aware of. General fund includes police, fire, recreation and parks, general administration, legal, public works, technical services, and inspections is one group. Information technology, HR, health services, including occupational health group, finance, engineering. health services, including occupational health group, finance, engineering, planning GIS, and then debt service makes up the expenditure areas in our general fund. Let me give, just a quick, another kind of recap snapshot of our major issues. On the revenue side, we see very little growth in property tax revenue. Sales tax revenues are projected to increase over the FY 1617 budget, but again, as I mentioned, there's uncertainty in the future depending on what happens in the legislature. We do have good news in terms of building permits, we are seeing those rise, and we feel, we feel, obviously, that's a good sign about what's happening in the economy. On the expenditure side, we did ask all departments this year to submit a no-growth budget, and we want to applaud them for working with us and working with the management team to keep those expenditure increases at a minimum. We are seeing increases on the public transportation side, I think I've explained that previously, the state grant that we had, was a two-year program, has expired. We've got to make up the difference in those funds, so that's most of our increase in public transportation. The two aquatics positions I mentioned, one position in public works, our merit adjustment, and then health insurance funding are our major expenditure changes. So what do we focus on in the general fund, sort of group of city programs, is providing outstanding daily city, outstanding daily city services, and that's kind of goes without saying, but it's always important to remind ourselves, we have stuff that we do each and every day for all our citizens, you know, for instance, just in our sanitation department alone, we literally touch every household every week, right? So we have those outstanding services that we try to deal with every day. We also are focused on, have a commitment to maintain and upgrade our neighborhoods throughout the city. Some things specifically to call out here today, we've added 50 street lights in the last few months through our transportation division. We're upgrading all our residential lights to LED. We have kicked off and started a robust economic development program, it's going to pay dividends for us in the future. Some of our policing strategies, connecting with the community, our trust or transparency philosophy. We recently were reaccredited at a national level by Kalia, so really, really good things going on in the police, in the police department. Our Burlington Connected Program, council members which you're familiar with, is a way to address concerns that citizens have and get those addressed quickly. We're serious and do vigorous codes enforcement through our planning department, and then we have a very professional animal services department that are, you know, quick to serve as needed and very reliable, and we've made dramatic improvements in what we're doing with animals that end up being placed in our shelter. So other things that are happening in the general fund on the infrastructure side and the capital side, and these are just the major pieces of that, we have a fire engine that will be purchased out of Capital Reserve, $715,000. You see, we have two boom trucks in public works, a dump truck, a pothole patching truck, 14 police cars. We're going to do $900,000 with the street resurfacing this year, computer hardware at about $260,000, and we have a mower for Indian Valley Golf Course at about $64,000. What you see here, North Park Phase 1B, and I'm going to talk about that again before I wrap up this evening in one of my last slides, this is the original amount that was proposed to do Phase 1B improvements at $348,000, and that's in the original proposal, and I'm going to come back to that before we're done this evening. The other piece of emphasis of general fund, economic development, quality of life, we have partners that work with us, Alamance Chamber, Burlington Airport Authority, and Burlington Downtown Corporation, and you just approved a new contract for them, and you see what we're doing in both of those pieces, in all three of those in terms of our partners, trying to promote economic development throughout the city. General Fund highlights, so the proposed budget is $54,386,667, or about a 3.89% increase over what was our FY 1617 number, and I'm going to come back to that figure before we're done this evening as well. We proposed, the original proposal was a revenue-neutral, I mean, the original proposal is a 3.89% increase. We're also proposing a revenue-neutral tax rate of 59.73 cents. The Economic Development Program initiatives will continue, we're funding an increase for health insurance, merit salary adjustments, continuing our Link Transit Initiative with great success, and our capital replacement program. This is, I'm not going to read through this entire slide, the key takeaways are those various sources of fees and the various expenditures by department, with the total And again, some folks like to see that expressed in a pie chart. You see here that obviously the purple lavender color is our real property taxes, the aqua blue being our second largest category is sales tax, and then that sort of ECU purple is our state shared taxes, and you see those are our three largest groups. General Fund revenue sources, this list by percentage, again, some of the same information you just saw, and I'm not going to get through the details of that at this point. On our expenditure side, this pie chart expresses that, you see our largest expenditure, again, is the aqua blue there, police department, a little over $15 million. Our next largest category would be fire department in the sort of slate blue, I guess, $7.8 million. Public Works, purple at $9.2 million, and recreation coming in there with the purplish lavender color at 6.6, and you see some of the other departments scattered about there. Let me transition from general fund to Water Resources Fund. As council members know, we operate several different funds. Our Water Resources Fund functions independently of the general fund, it includes water and sewer repair and construction, water and sewer plants and facilities, laboratories, composting, customer service billing, and debt service. What we're proposing this year in the Water Resources Budget is a little over $29 million, that'd be $29,375,000. That's about a .69% increase, so a little less than a 1% increase there. That includes a 2% increase in water rates to offset inflation, and it'll help us with our increased demand for capital improvements. We are proposing no increase this year in the sewer rates, so the sewer rate will remain the same as it is presently. Our average residential customer increase is 40 cents a month for a customer that uses 5,000 gallons of water and sewer service monthly. The proposed budget does include funding for our employee health insurance costs, those health insurance programs being the same as for the employees in the general fund. Key expenditures in Water Resources, we're funding to switch the Macintosh plant from chlorine gas to bleach, which is basically liquid chlorine. We're funding design work for water line replacements at Greason Road and a three-mile water line from Stony Creek to the Ed Thomas Water Plant. We're also proposing funding to begin the transition to radio meter reads. We're currently doing our meter reads the old-fashioned way, which is you open the metal door, you look at the meter and literally write it down on a piece of paper, and we're trying to upgrade that technology. This will give us the funding to begin that transition to be a little more efficient. We're looking at funding 100% of the capital request from the Water Resources Department this year to keep our systems intact. We're also providing some engineering design work to repair the Ed Thomas Plant, it needs some structural work and some roof work that we want to get taken care of. As I also mentioned, health insurance increases, and then provision for merit salary adjustments, and again, the salary, the pay plan is handled just like it is for our general fund employees. So our commitment in Water Resources is to maintain and improve infrastructure, to provide safe and clean drinking water, effectively treat wastewater, promote economic development, and improve quality of life. And again, some more of the major improvements, we have the hypochloric conversion project, the radio meter read, which I mentioned, and I'll just highlight a few of these others, and inflow and infiltration reductions, about $325,000, and then replacing water lines throughout the system, and you see there's a lot of other items that I won't get into detail now. Here's a snapshot of the Water Resources Fund budget, again, the key is looking at the revenue categories that total $29,375,121 compared to the expenditure side, and it is a balanced budget with that same figure, and you see the various categories in which we spend Water Resources funds. Pie chart for Water Resources, the ECU purple color again is our sewer rent collections, our sewer fees, $15 million, $15.7 million, and water is about $11 million in the lavender color, and then what you see in the sort of maroon color is water sales, and our largest industrial customer is City of Greensboro. Water Resources expenditures, and you see that sort of split between the various components of the group, including debt service there, about $4.4 million in the purple, which is taking care of our capital needs from the past. Water sewer rates, so the typical utility bill based on 5,000 gallons, currently, the cost per day for a user is $1.83, and that, with the new rate, it'll be $1.84. The monthly bill going up there, as you see, about 40 cents a month. For someone using a little less, typical customer using 2,500 gallons a month, same thing, you see about a 1 cent cost per day, or about 20 cents for the cost for the entire month. All right, I'm going to switch gears now, talk a little bit about Transportation Fund, and that's primarily our Link Transit. As you heard earlier this evening, Link Transit is celebrating its one-year anniversary today, so it's nice to be talking about that here. Major success, as you just heard, 80,000-plus riders thus far, the goal of the program is clean, safe, and on time. What the budget this year needs is funding of $416,300 for operations from the general fund, and there's a one-time capital expense of $540,000 that mostly will be spent on sidewalks and shelters to make the user experience a little bit better than it is today. The total proposed budget for the Transportation Fund is $223,500. And just as a reminder to everyone, we received significant capital funding for this program, 80% of the funding for our capital items comes from federal dollars, and 50% of our operations fund comes from federal dollars, so that makes all of this so much more manageable. Stormwater Fund is one of the other programs we operate. No proposed change in rates for our Stormwater Fund, the rate is currently $5 per month. We have about 22,500 customers, we propose that to stay the same. That generates about $1.223 million, and that will have a budget based on that, on that figure for Stormwater. Some of the highlights in Stormwater is continuing to develop, implement, and enforce a program to reduce the discharge of pollutants, continuing to map the city's storm drainage program, trying to work on illicit discharge detection and elimination, and we have a pretty vigorous public education and outreach program as well. So there's a handful of other funds throughout the city, and I'm not going to read through the amounts, but just mention the funds, we have a Controlled Substance Abuse Fund, RICO Fund, MPO Transportation Fund, Municipal Planning, excuse me, Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Fund, Guilford Macintosh Municipal Service District, which is our BDC, Drainage Improvements, the Rehab Loan Fund, Rental Rehab Loan Program, and our Community Development Block Grant Program, and those are all required to be set up in separate funds for various reasons. Okay, so there's a handful of changes, so that was the original proposal, you got this roughly a month ago or so, but there's been a handful of changes, we discussed those last night, I think council had some communication with you leading up to last night, so we have a handful of changes. You have these handouts at your desk, so there is one change to the Community Development Program, the Grant Project Ordinance. Let me find a copy of what that, you're going to find that at your seat, it's got some interesting colors on it, and let me try to walk you through that. So we detected that we had provided incorrect information to you in your original packet, so if you see the sheet with the blue, with the blue lines on it, that is what you received in your packet earlier, and that is incorrect, so you can disregard that sheet. Let me take this one and walk you through what the changes are. Basically, we listed some incorrect categories. So if you look at the three orange categories, travel is a new category for us, that will be in the Grant Project Ordinance. We're also funding $100,000 for North Park improvements, as we mentioned a moment ago, that's a new category in orange, and then finally, the infrastructure, Church Street Sidewalk, which is a new section sidewalk at Church Street, kind of there where Marco's, along the area where Marco's Pizza is and the video store in that general neighborhood of Church Street, and that's funded at $86,111. The two green categories are categories that have gone up from last year, Personnel Services going up $99, and then our Burlington Development Corporation has increased $10,791. Everything else has basically just changed slightly, or is it zero? So we apologize for that mistake, what we gave you previously was last year's projects, and that's incorrect, but the bottom line, number 402,011 is the same, we had just inserted the incorrect internal numbers there for the projects. So I didn't want to draw your attention to that, and again, we're not asking council to take any action this evening, that does not come until June 20th.
Pardon me, Quack, and who would we know about the Community Development Block Grant?
We wouldn't know until the federal government adopts a budget, and so what
Do we talk October?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It may be sooner.
I don't think this happened before.
HUD supposedly, from what we've been told, has the funding, but they have to divide all that up amongst all the recipients, which includes us. However, there is the budget that was submitted by the Trump Administration, and then it has to go through the approvals through the House and the Senate, so it's kind of up in the air, we're still being told we should get about what we had last year, again, maybe a little less, but they're calling for support from community development people across the country, and so I wish I could give you a more firm answer.
So would we, if we receive less, we'll do a budget amendment for the reduction, and then it'll be a percentage spread?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you recently adopted an action plan, and if you recall, there were portions of that said that if it's this much less, then we'll reduce the following category, so we kind of called out and told the federal government what we planned to do if it comes in lower.
Okay. I was just curious, you know, because we really don't get the money in October, you know, according to my calculation, July 1st comes before October.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering what we're going to do, you know, in the meantime, I know around my household, that time difference will make a difference. Anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir, and that's obviously what the asterisk is there about, but I think that's a sort of an ongoing piece, with a new wrinkle this year being a new, you know, executive administration at the federal level, added a new wrinkle to that, but yeah, we'll have plans, there's contingency plans if that comes in lower, and that was actually already been adopted by you all in terms of that action plan that, you know, I think if I remember my memory serves correctly, if 10% comes in less, we'll cut the following, if 20% less, we'll cut the following, and it goes all the way down. So we've kind of pegged that, and I think we've told our, you know, our applicants, you know, where they stand in the pecking order if that happens, so everybody's prepared for that. Thank you. So the other change is in reaction to comments, questions I've received over the last month or so, and what I have presented to you this evening, and we discussed it last night, is a revised budget, a revised budget proposal that will change our grant total, and I'll show the grant total on the next page in just a moment. So this proposal is a reduction, if council is interested, shows a reduction of $500,000, and the target was to show a 2.88% overall general fund increase instead of a 3.89% increase. And so here are the four ways, the four components of that. So we're going to, we're proposing a delay of two items in the North Park improvements, Phase 1B, we're not eliminating those, we're just delaying them for one year, we'll tackle those in the FY 1819 fiscal year as Phase 1C, and that includes the ballfield lighting and the backstop fencing, bleachers, dugout improvements portion of that overall project. You know, we gave great success in the past year, the park looks beautiful, great comments all around on what's happened there, and there's a lot of positive momentum. You'll see more momentum in FY 1718 with $212,000, this would still be included in the FY 1718 budget, which is current, would be called Phase V, that's renovations to Mako Bigelow Community Center, renovations to the Sotoma Shelter, which is a building on site, landscaping throughout the park, but also specifically focused on the area in front of Sharp Road to pick up on the improvements we've already made on the visual experience for Sharp Road motorists, and then design work for all of the above. So that $212,000 will still be included, we would tackle that as Phase 1B. And then coming back in FY 1819, we would come back and do Phase 1C, which is the ballfield lighting and the fencing and the improvements around the fields. So item two, we're proposing, which, excuse me, so that is a net savings of $136,000 for this fiscal year. Item two is eliminating the transfer of $355,000 to the Capital Reserve Account. We could consider a mid-year transfer if revenues are higher than estimated, and we'll wait and see what the market tells us on that as we get through the calendar year, go through the fiscal year. Item three is to try to get us to that $500,000 target, item three and four are just small items, but eliminating fence repair funding, we have some funding set aside in Recreation and Park Fields account for about $8,000 worth of fencing, and Mr. Walz is going to try to find other ways to do that within the department. And then finally, just to get us, so we didn't stop at 499, we're going to reduce our shingle replacement project at Dataways by $1,000, so Tony has $19,000 to spend on a new roof instead of $20,000. So that gets us to our target of cutting $500,000 out of the budget we originally proposed, and I'm happy to take questions, and I know council, we've had some individual conversations about it, discussed it a little bit last night. If you have any questions about any of those, I'll be happy to take that. If you're interested in that proposal, that basically would make your new proposed budget total 53,886,106, or 2.88% increase over FY 1617 budget, and again, that does maintain the revenue-neutral tax rate of 59.73. And that's all I have, and I'm here, let me also, before I wrap up, and I see if you have any questions specifically about these new changes. these new changes, is I want to thank Peggy Reese, our finance director, for the wonderful job she does year-round, but especially over the last, you know, two, three months of really bearing down. Also thank Peggy's staff, who helps her behind the scenes, but also kind of helps keep things moving in finance while she is spending near, close to about a hundred percent of her time on budget. And also want to thank Nolan Curtin, our director of technical and development services, for his role on the budget team and helping us whittle down mostly on the expenditure side. So with that, open the floor to questions, and especially if you want to have any questions about the revised proposals.
Any questions from council members?
Thank you, manager.
All right, I'm happy to sit down.
This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak.
Council, did I hear any questions or motions?
We'll be closing the podium here. Actually, didn't we consider continuing a public hearing, harden, in accordance until June twentieth?
Certainly can, yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I, according to your memo, I thought, you know, that was the plan to do that. If so, if you continue, there really won't be any action by the council until the June twentieth meeting, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, that would be, yeah. Amending your motion to, yeah, to continue?
Yeah, to continue until June twentieth.
I have one question though. Are we going to vote on this separate, the budget and C2BG grant?
We have the thought.
It'll be part of our budget.
Yeah.
It'll just require amendment if the, if the funds do not match what we're budgeting.
Budget.
Yeah, which, which quite honestly, if we collect less revenue, we have to change the budget mid-year. We're part of amendments, but they're different.
So there's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any question, further questions or comments regarding the motion to continue? Okay. All those in favor of motioning, of the motion to continue this discussion and public hearing to June twentieth, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion has been passed. We have an item of new business, item two. City council will consider rescheduling a date of public hearing for July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen for a notice of intent to adopt a resolution to approve a ten-year May Hogerie parking lease between the City of Burlington and Quacken Properties, LLC for thirty parking spaces and municipal lot number eight. At this time, council recognizes Economic Development Director Peter Bishop. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a pretty simple rescheduling, although per statute, we need to do included as a new business item. What the developer has requested is a little additional time with his partner to assess the financial impacts of the long-term parking lease that we have been discussing with him. And we discussed this a little bit last night at the work session, but not specifically here. So we're essentially just delaying from the twentieth of June to the eighteenth of July, the same proposal we've been putting forward. That will push back our publishing date for that public notice as well. So just going through the proper I-dotting and T-crossing.
Any questions from council? Do I hear?
We approve the, the rescheduling date.
Check. All those in favor of moving the rescheduled date?
To July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All those in favor of moving the date to July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion's passed. That concludes our regular business from this agenda. We had no public comment signed up for this evening. Staff did have a report request following our work session. Manager, do you want to briefly present these items?
Yes, be happy to. And I apologize in advance, I promise never to take up this many minutes of talk from future council meetings. I always set my record, and I'll try to work on it.
You on the clock?
Yes, sir. Understood. I apologize. So as again, as a follow-up from last night, city council expressed some interest in, in learning a little bit more and hearing some information about the Paris Agreement. You have been provided a memorandum that's at your seat. I think we got it out a little after four o'clock this afternoon, so those of you may have had a chance to see it late this afternoon. But let me just walk through all of that. And before I do that, also, we were able to locate a copy of the actual Paris Agreement, the thirty-two-page version, and that's here. If anybody would like something to, to read this evening, we can make copies of that for everybody as well, so. But we have a wonderful staff here at City of Burlington, as you all know, so let me start off by acknowledging our, my colleagues, Morgan Lassiter and Eric Hilton. They did a wonderful job of basically turning this thirty-two-page document and then a various handful of other documents that are out there in commentary about that into the one-page memo. And so let me try to summarize the memo for city council regarding the Paris Agreement. And again, just bear with me for a moment. So the United States is part of the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change. It was a treaty adopted in nineteen ninety-two to stabilize greenhouse gas emissions in response to the idea that such emissions will cause a change in the earth's climate, negatively affecting different groups of people around the world. So in two thousand and fifteen, the Conference of Parties, which is an annual meeting of those in this treaty, signed an international agreement that is commonly called Paris Agreement. It's a thirty-two-page document, again, which is sitting here. It consolidates opinions from different countries on the topic of climate change, particularly the, the potential for impacts from carbon dioxide produced by human activity. It was adopted by executive order by President Obama. It was not ratified as a treaty through the U.S. Senate. Therefore, future presidents by executive order could alter the U.S.'s participation in the agreement. Accordingly, President Trump issued an executive order June first of two thousand and seventeen for the U.S. to exit the Paris Agreement. So the content of Paris Agreement is broad and general. It's based on the assumption that human behavior has had an impact on climate, currently being debated in the scientific community by highly respected professionals. To highlight a few of the fundamental scientific issues still being debated, let me just run through three of those. The nature of temperature measurements used, where were they taken, their precision when taken, the accuracy of the temperature models used to forecast climate impacts from CO2 emission levels, and modeling inputs such as natural cyclic changes in ocean temperature, cyclic solar activity, atmospheric water vapor content, and vegetative responses to CO2 concentration. They're not well-understood, the impacts of the models are still not fully known. And again, that's not hard words, but sort of what the scientific debate still is around. The specific action mentioned in the agreement is found in Article Two, Point A. And so let me try to recite that, and I think that's where everybody's kind of focusing their attention. The nations agreeing will implement recommendations from the UNFCC to hold the increase in the global average temperature to, and this is quote, "to well below two degrees centigrade above pre-industrial levels and pursue efforts to limit the temperature increase to one-point-five degrees centigrade above pre-industrial levels, recognizing that this would significantly reduce the risks and impacts of climate change," and that's closed quote. So that's the actual quote from the document. The specifics of how this will now, this is now back to the memo. Specifics of how this would actually occur have been left to each member nation. No technical details presented in our thirty-two-page document. So far, discussions been around reduction in oil, coal, and natural gas consumption for power generation, manufacturing, and transportation by the different nations. So what you're seeing in the agreement is a commitment from developed nations to provide financial support, to developing nations for assistance in meeting their obligations under the agreement. So the impact of implementation of these goals is still being debated, as they impact agriculture, energy generation, healthcare, and job creation. So that's sort of the global view. Now, we talked just a little bit locally, just to give you the context, and then I will quickly yield the floor here. City of Burlington has undertaken a number of focused sustainability initiatives since two thousand and nine. At that point, the city was awarded an energy efficiency block grant by the Department of Energy. So some of the, our efforts since two thousand and nine include the following. We've upgraded lighting in city buildings from T twelve to two-eight, to T, excuse me, from T twelve to T eight, and now we've upgraded LED. We've upgraded our HVAC systems and control systems. We've upgraded our aeration and pumping systems at our wastewater treatment plants. We've implemented LED street lighting, which we already just mentioned in the budget. We've upgraded our exterior building lighting for city buildings. And then prior to two thousand and nine, we had moved to LED traffic signals, switching over from the historic incandescent lights. I think Mr. Hilton summarized, sort of the city's philosophy has been be as green as you can with the green you've got, was sort of the mantra that Eric shared with us. City staff and leaders continue to capitalize on opportunities for energy savings within our financial restraints. We certainly look for opportunities when they present themselves. Our efforts have yielded measurable energy savings since our implementation. As a whole, the synergies in, excuse me, the city's, the city's energy consumption is down fifteen percent since two thousand and twelve, in spite of adding facilities and services during that time. So that is just sort of the local view of a global issue. And at that point, Mr. Mayor, I will yield the floor.
Thank you very much for that information. It was, it was good to learn more about that sustainability plan and the scope that the city's had moving forward with that. I mean, my, my curiosity was to learn more about kind of the impact of Paris Agreement changes and how that might affect us locally. It sounds like we're on a, a great path as far as balancing sustainability and fiscal responsibility with these projects. I know many of the things that you listed between lighting upgrades, like LED lights, also have public safety benefits. I've heard from numerous merchants who, when we, streetlights have been upgraded, they've seen reductions in loitering and safer communities, as well as residents who have seen those LED upgrades in their communities. So I think the city's done a great job kind of balancing sustainability and fiscal responsibility there. I don't see the need for any further action unless council has other questions.
I would just like to comment, I think the city is pretty much even with the curve, ahead of the curve on this thing, and I would commend the city for its efforts, you know, the staff. So I don't know that we need any further action. We stay on the same core. We're doing, we're doing what we can.
Exactly, because this is not binding agreement anyway.
Yeah.
So I mean, yeah, we're doing our part.
Yeah, I would say very much so.
One other item that was brought up recently in my, the Metropolitan Mayor's Organization under in Greenville was the importance of pre-planning. Now, if climate change does in fact create more severe weather events, it's important that cities plan upfront as to how to handle those and to recover from them. And the Metropolitan Mayor's Organization, in conjunction with Duke University, put together a guide document for how cities can, can help prepare themselves for any type of disaster, whether it be human-created, whether it be environmental, whatever type there is. And so I'm happy to share that link once the Duke University researchers finish up their, their report. Any other questions or comments on that? Otherwise, we'll move to council comments.
No comment.
Just that I'm impressed with what it is that we've done so far, and I do think, I mean, if this is, this is our advice, maybe it needs to be our policy, that that's something that we might ask, that what is it exactly that we're trying to accomplish? Because I think there are some things that, and I'll follow up on my Infrastructure Institute and let you know some ideas. You know how a good idea just comes together all at the same time? The kinds of things that happened at this institute or what was discussed were things that are very much germane to what we're doing in our city, but it was also other things, including green roofs in an affordable way, solar panels on new buildings, so that the whole convention center in Raleigh is pay, all of their electricity is from their solar panels, and they're also generating some more electricity to sell back to Duke Energy. So there are some things that cities can do that a lot of people at NC State are looking at in ways that are not so, it's what we can afford, rather than things that look more like frills at this point. And then the payback is not very long. It's three years to nine years to pay back the extra cost for those kinds of initiatives. So as time goes on, we need to be looking at those ideas as ways to do some, something about our own CO2 emissions.
And to share a little information, you know, full of information.
I'm full of information.
I'm full of information.
You are.
North Carolina's leading the nation in solely energy.
We are, and, and that's to our benefit and will be to our benefit. And I think that as each city looks at these seriously, and it's all, it's about all of us, no, no one big city can take care of this, no one initiative, so it's going to be everybody. These are ways that we can be serious about it.
Were there other takeaways from your infrastructure conference?
I'll be bringing them up as we go along.
Okay, excellent.
They looked at transportation, they looked at energy consumption, and they were looking at IT, different ways that we could have smart cities essentially. And we're, we're starting that with the meter readers and that kind of thing. So we're, we're moving in the direction, and the doing is what's important, not the talking about it, so.
All right. Other council comments?
I want to thank Peggy and her staff, Harden, and my friend Jim Butler, Councilman Butler, who's just working on his budget. He's a gear guru with numbers, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much, and staff, Harden, and council.
I'd like to share a couple of events coming up, as usual. I've had the opportunity to ride the Green Line today as part of our Link Transit Day celebration. Met, got to meet some wonderful riders, including one first-time rider. I'll be back out there doing some informal Link Transit Town Halls and getting to meet folks out in the community tomorrow between twelve-thirty and one-fifty on the Purple Line. We'll be out in the evening on the Orange Line as well, and then out on the Blue Line on Thursday. So I hope to see folks out there. Sunset Rhythms is playing this Friday down at City Park from seven to nine P.M., and a big thank you to everyone who came out to Fourth Fridays last month. We'll be doing that again, June twenty-third downtown at the Depot. It was a great event. We had beautiful weather for it. A lot of folks really appreciate kicking that back off downtown. And then always love to talk about our wonderful pet adoption center. They're doing a special from the tenth to the seventeenth of this month, where you can adopt any dog or cat for just ten dollars. That's all I've got. Yes, Tony?
Mayor, I have one late-breaking news alert. We just found out later this afternoon, and I sent you an email, you probably hadn't read it yet, but we are hosting the Greens, our grasshoppers, game against Hagertown tomorrow evening at seven o'clock at Broad and Athletic Stadium. They have a few issues with their field over in Greensboro, so we were lucky enough to get that game as a possibility, depending on how they progress with their field. We may have a doubleheader on Thurs, we're, we're very fortunate. First time I've ever, in my few years here, seen my baseball team from another city come and play in another city's ballpark. So we're, we're very happy to do that. That's going to be a really good treat for all the baseball fans in Broad and Athletic Stadium.
It's an honor to welcome you to our community.
They're going to stay once we get there.
Any other comments from council? Did I hear any further business?
I'd like to make a motion. We wanted to close session for personnel matter, pursuant to one forty-three, three-eighteen, eleven-eight-six. Got the motion?
All those in favor of going into the closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Council will return following the closed session.
Motion is passed, council will return following the closed session.
I think you're taking three hours of public comments.
Last night was tough.
Were you there the whole time?
No, I didn't stay till midnight.
You were there. I think I almost stumbled into you. Yeah. Trying to find the speakers.
Do I hear your motion resumed?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Your motion adjourned. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. No actions taken.
How are you today, sir? Congratulations again to you.